All right, we're going to get started pretty soon. All right, are we ready? And we're live? Okay, just checking. All right, we're back for the reorganization special order of business at the 4:30 meeting. We're going to start with Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Actually, if we can have... Hold on one moment. We do have a representative from Michelle Steele's office.
That's right, Mr. Whitaker, you'll go first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council, staff and residents of Newport Beach. It's an honor to be here again, once again, and probably, actually, the last time as her district director, as Chairwoman and Supervisor for the Board of Supervisors. As you know, she's Congresswoman-elect, and she's out of here in about two weeks. But in this capacity, it's always a pleasure to work with each and every one of you fine gentlemen and ladies up there. And always fitting to... There's no such thing as a bad mayor in this city. And it seems like somehow that each year, whatever's going on amongst yourselves, the right mayor is chosen for that year's surprises or whatever pops up. And first and foremost, to you, Mayor O'Neill, if I could, I want to present you with something on behalf of the Chairwoman. She wants to thank you for your outstanding leadership this year. I mean, who knew that's elected in office with all of you included, that we're going to endure a pandemic? No one. And the way that you have guided this ship has been nothing short of stellar in your performance. I can assure the residents, you've been constant communication with me, with Michelle, as has your awesome City Manager and staff as well on all things pertaining to Newport Beach. And we worked hand in hand in making sure we got funds out to the businesses and everything is necessary. And you're still always calling to look for things out of the box, that what can we do? What is available from the county to help out your businesses and your residents? And that's what leadership is all about. And so I want to thank you on her behalf, and I don't know what the protocol will be. Do you want me to just leave this here and you'll get it later?
That works.
Okay, then that's what I'm going to do. But this is from her, job well done, well deserved, and we're looking forward to working with you more in the future. Okay, sir, so?
Thank you, Tim, and please convey my appreciation to Supervisor Chairwoman Steele for her chairwomanship during a pandemic as well. And then I wish her well in Washington and look forward to working with her on all of the pressing issues, the federal issues we have here in the city of Newport Beach.
There you go, well done, thank you, sir. And then also, I know that Councilman Herdman is not here, but I also have something for Jeff. I don't know if he's watching or what, but he did a fantastic job. He was diligent in his duties, passionate about the things that were important to him. And I remember his service mostly because he was just ever-present, never diligent regarding airport issues along with Councilmember Dixon in representing the city at the county level and ensuring that Newport Beach was able to prevail as much as possible on negotiations with the entire board. Of course, as you know, the Chairwoman was staunchly behind everything what Newport wanted, but there's five people up there. And your team did stellar, Councilman Herdman, and you were part of that. And I know you won't go too far, but she wants to acknowledge your four years of service to the city, and we have that here as well. And then lastly, in closing, of course, we're a couple of weeks out of Christmas in a very awkward time brought upon us by the Governor of this state. And it's trying, and the Chairwoman wants everyone to know that the county's still here. I'll be staying back as transition staff. I'll not be going with her to Congress, that's by mutual agreement, helping her get on. But I'll be staying at the county, and so we'll have smooth transition as we transition over to our next supervisor. But anything that you need in the meantime, you'll still be able to reach me on my cell as you all have or at the office, anything that we can do for you and/or the residents that are watching. But she wants everybody to have a safe, blessed Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and New Year, and just kudos to staff, to you guys. And then I do have to run because we've got like three other cities going at the same time. And so if you would permit me, to the new mayor and the new Mayor Pro Tem, whoever that might be, congratulations and looking forward to talking to you. And I also want to welcome your newest member to the Council, Councilmember Blom when he is sworn in. And that's all that I have, and thank you so very much. And I'll look forward to hearing from each and every one of you. And again, phone call away, but great job this year.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back into regular order and hand it to Mr. Avery.
Mr. Mayor, I've got to present you with the City of Newport Beach Mayor 19 through 20 for an extraordinary job and an incredible time like no other.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, is that made out of sneeze guard material?
This is slightly nicer than what's on either side of us right now. So I do have some remarks that I'd like to take a little bit of time to reflect a bit on this year. You know, over a year ago, I envisioned a year very different from the year that we actually had. I envisioned a year of taking on difficult tasks, but tasks that were normal to the everyday life of a vibrant and mature city. I anticipated a focus on the fundamentals, a response to external pressures at the legislative level in particular RENA, and expected to celebrate those who give back to what I dubbed the Year of the Volunteer. I also envisioned my kids throwing candy from a car during the Babo Island Parade. I envisioned smiling during the mayor's egg roll, and I envisioned ribbon cuttings and rubber chicken dinners. COVID and the resulting reactions at the national, state, county and local levels have, of course, overshadowed the year that we envisioned. And yet, in the midst of a pandemic, we cannot ignore the accomplishments and milestones this city reached this year. On the fundamentals front, we called for a continuing focus on setting and expecting the highest standards from our public safety officials. Our Newport Beach Police Department has stepped up in countless ways this year and has earned every bit of praise that this community has given. We called for a replacement of Lido Fire Station, which we have approved and will see constructed in the coming year. Additionally, our Newport Beach Fire Department has responded to every medical call in the midst of a pandemic and has saved communities up and down the state with mutual aid fire calls. We called for replacing and repairing water and sewer lines and our roads, which we have done actually at an advanced pace this year simply because so few people were actually on the roads for a few months there. We called for a continued focus on our unfunded pension liabilities, which we have done despite significant budgetary reductions in anticipation of COVIDs and the lockdowns effects on our economy. We have dramatically improved our response to homelessness over the past two years, helped in large part by Natalie Bespergen's coordination. Not only has our approach helped this year, but we have joined Costa Mesa in their shelter that will open in 2021. And in fact, I signed the MOU yesterday. On the external pressures front, our primary focus was on RENA. This process was simply and unmistakably delayed by COVID's effects. At the beginning of the year, we charted three concurrent paths of pushing back legally and legislatively and then finding compliance with volunteer experts in our community. On the legal front, our appealable arena number was not provided until September 11th. We appealed and are awaiting SCAG's decision. On the legislative front, we asked our local Assembly Member to carry forward legislative help, which she did, but it died in committee. We've also helped convince SCAG to reinitiate its litigation committee to assess a legal challenge to the SCAG overall RENA number. And we are advocating through SCAG for help to count housing rejected by other agencies. And my sincere thanks to our citizen-led Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. They have been focused on identifying specific sites, not regions like the airport, because the HCD paperwork requires us to identify where units will go by Assessor Parcel numbers and spread across various income levels. And I know I threw a lot of acronyms there, but if you care about RENA at all, you know all of these acronyms by heart at this point, and I just covered all of them. There remains a lot of work to be done, but the level of expertise by our volunteers and those we've hired is just about second to none, and their help is simply invaluable. And we highlighted the good work done in our city by recognizing the number of organizations and people who make our city better. We've recognized volunteers like Debbie Brastek, who runs our Newport Harbor High School Mentorship Program, Karen Tringali, who has given back for decades, Vicky Ronaldson at the Corona Del Mar Community Church Congregational, and the amazing volunteers at Sherman Gardens, and so many more. But I still think my sentimental favorite is the very first recognition, Tony Kappa, who led the Oasis Ukulele Singers and Strummers Club for 27 years. It's probably fitting that he was the first proclamation of this year, and the last went to Celeste. Of course, as noted, I simply did not anticipate one year ago that we would declare a state of emergency in our city on March 18th. That would continue through today and into the foreseeable future. 2020 has been, in a word, unprecedented. We have called six special meetings and three emergency meetings, which Leilani assures me, our city clerk, that she doesn't even remember the last time we called an emergency meeting. We have fought for open spaces to remain open, responded to historic flooding on the peninsula, partnered with our school district to return students to school, hosted a modified but incredibly successful Newport Beach Junior Guards Program, and so much more. Throughout, we have acknowledged that our city is not a healthcare agency, but that we would follow the guidelines and orders from our state and county healthcare agencies. And perhaps most importantly for our residents' overall health, we partnered early with Hoag Hospital to amplify their messages throughout the year. We have also been fortunate to see expansion of quality healthcare available to our entire city with the addition of Hoag's Urgent Care in Newport Coast, UCI's Whole Body Urgent Care in Newport Center, and City of Hope's World Class Cancer Treatment Center. I know that members of our City Council have lost... I knew this one was getting big at me. I know that members of our City Council have lost friends and family this year. Some in truly tragic ways. And I've heard from so many of our residents who have gone through extraordinary pain and grief this year. Our hearts are broken with you. I really am proud of our city leadership and city staff for your consistent devotion to serving the people of Newport Beach. We maintain city services in ways that our residents appreciate so much, from continued rapid response to 911 calls to our incredible library services in person and virtual, to modernizing our approach to the Arbor Code, to addressing homelessness in new and improving ways. I'm just so proud of you. And one other thank you to our rapid response teams led by our Community Development Department that have helped small businesses expand their footprints in our city. That program has received universal acclaim, and your work has saved countless businesses that our city loves. So we end this year in a very different place than we did one year ago, a place that requires steady leadership, which I know exists on this dais in our city staff and in spades in this city. Despite all of the challenges this council has faced, I thank each and every one of you for the chance to be mayor this year. As a sign of my appreciation, I have actually brought with me handmade gifts for each of my fellow council members, which I think you all have noticed at least behind you and have hopefully acknowledged the sign saying, "Please don't touch yet." So what I'd like you to do is actually go ahead and grab those and show the audience what they are. These were designed and made by a Newport Beach artist named Shannon Wadsworth, who sells her art through Seaside Gallery and Goods here in Newport Beach. I'm going to use this as an opportunity to remind everyone that we have some truly incredibly talented small business owners here in the city. I encourage everyone to take a break from online shopping this year and give your business to our local businesses, to folks like Seaside and Shannon, to places like the WeLoft in CDM, the Babo Island Museum on Marine Avenue, Lido Marina Village, or hundreds of others throughout this year. Make the effort this year to support our small businesses and restaurants who will be hurting this year without our support. Because if you want your favorite place to be there in six months or a year, shop there now. Just want to part with these words, "We can and we will continue to be Newport Strong." "We can and we will continue to be the light in this darkness." So from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say, "Thank you." So, yeah. Ms. Brenner.
I'd just like to say thank you, Will, for your leadership this year. And I'm sorry it wasn't a normal year, so you could have all those experiences, but you really have done an incredible job. And I especially thank you for the Year of the Volunteer, because it was very meaningful, and I wish we could have done more with that. But it was a great idea, and hopefully, maybe we can continue that just as a regular part of our council, because it really is... That's what makes our community so special, are the people that just volunteer continuously. So, and thank you for our artwork as well.
You're very welcome. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And let me just echo Ms. Brenner and thank you for your outstanding year of leadership. While you didn't have the picnics and the parades because of the pandemic, you probably performed more acts of substance on behalf of the city than any previous mayor probably in our history. And your representation of the city before County Board of Supervisors and just as Tim just mentioned and how you are in constant contact with our Supervisor Michelle Steele and working with the county agencies. You even, in the last February, gathered in Costa Mesa to resist the governor and his actions at the beginning of COVID. And so you've... We've benefited from your wise counsel, and that's legal and otherwise, and your steady hand. And I know it's been appreciated by staff and the community and all of us. And thank you for your dedication and indefatigable commitment to the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, thank you for such a great job that you've done, obviously. But more than that, thank you for me not having to be mayor through this, because I was the last guy. I just barely made it. I'm going to tell you, having been mayor and knowing what Will has gone through, it would have been so different and so much not as fun and so hard, really hard. And I don't know if I could have done a... I know I would have struggled with that. But Will did an extraordinary job, and it's almost like he was born to get us through this. So I really appreciate that. But more, again, thank God I wasn't the man. The job, Will.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beautiful remarks, and there's scripture that says that we're chosen basically for the family we have and even the name we have, where we're born, and where we're put in this life. And clearly, you were put here this time to show amazing level-headedness and temperament. And if anyone on this dais is heated, it's probably sometimes Will and I in close session. But I'll tell you, out in the public, Will, he showed amazing calmness and demeanor that's worthy of the highest remarks. And I know the community is very grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Avery.
Yeah, so often we see when extraordinary challenging times come, leaders are forged. And I know that forging happened prior to this, but I do believe one of the... It's got incredible aspects of this, being hit by a ton of bricks early into your term really brought all your skills to the fore for the benefit of everybody in this city. It's just been incredible to watch as Mayor Pro Tem, Will's dedication, but intellect and timing and skills of just reaching out to people at all levels and making people just feel safer and making them see that there's... We're going to get out of this, there's a way out of this. So that's hope, and that's one of the greatest things you can give a community. And I think our mayor this year did that in an incredible way many times over. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, let's see if we can keep going with an efficient meeting. Item number nine is the certification of the general municipal election. Madam Clerk.
The resolution confirms the results of the 2020 general municipal election as certified by the Orange County Register Voter's Office. And I'm proud to report that Newport Beach's voter turnout was over 91%.
That's just incredible. I love that our residents got out and voted this year. All right, we'll first start with public comments. Do we have any public comments, Mr. Moser?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. Of the many things that could be said about the election results, I want to focus on just one. The results that you are certifying tonight acknowledge the existence of council districts in Newport Beach. The existence of the districts is dictated by our city charter. But what I want to emphasize is that their only significance in our city charter is to ensure that our representatives are spread out geographically. Our representatives are elected from districts, not for districts. And in general, representatives are expected to represent the people who had a right to vote for them. So for each of you, including our newly electives, the people who had a chance to vote for you are all of Newport Beach, and those are who you represent. If any of you feel instead that you want to be or would be more effective, if you are representative just to the district in which you happen to live, then you should ask your colleagues to place on the ballot a charter amendment so that in future elections, you're elected by and only by the voters of the area you want to represent. Until then, you have been elected by all of Newport Beach, and you are the representatives from districts, not for districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have any calls? All right. Hi, go ahead. Hi, if you can hear me on the phone, go ahead. All right, one more time. Well, wouldn't have been this year if this hadn't happened.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead. We could, can't anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear us now?
Good afternoon.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you all for serving our community on the City Council. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobiyashi, and I live near Fashion Island and the Newport Beach Police Department. I'm a pretty pragmatic person, but today I'm speaking from the heart. I realize that each of you on the council serves the entire city of Newport Beach, pay much attention to what district any of you are attached to, nor am I concerned about how what you do might play into aspirations for futures of office. What I do care about right now is the health of our community and the importance of who is most effective at leading us through this pandemic. All of you are capable leaders. The work I'm about to make isn't about anyone not being capable, and it's not about anyone getting their turn or part of our community being specifically represented. About how in the darkest and most frightening of days, weeks, we, the citizens of all Newport, have come to depend on Mayor O'Neill to help lead us through the darkness, and we still need him quite desperately. We need that voice of encouragement, early morning image of hope, and that cheerleader for our restaurants and shops, and that soul of our city. So here's my request, please make the bold decision to keep Mayor O'Neill on as our mayor for 2021, but we can continue to have his steady feet and comforting hand guide us out of these coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers? Okay, we'll bring it back. Do we have a motion on this item? So moved by Ms. Dixon, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
All right, this is the time for public comments. Note, the public comments on items 10 through 14 will be taken prior to consideration of the specific items. We'll start in the community room.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Moser again. On this item, which includes the election of the mayor and the election of the Mayor Pro Tem, I wanted to remind you that Newport Beach does not have a strong mayor system in which a city has a separately-elected mayor having administrative powers or powers to introduce or veto legislation. Instead, under our charter, the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem are largely ceremonial positions. What I wanted to suggest to you is that because we elect seven council members, they can only be on the council for a maximum of eight years. If, in the spirit of collegiality, you want all of the members to have a chance to fill all of those ceremonial roles during their eight years on the council, it is necessary to rotate the positions each year with no repetition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any calls? All right, we'll bring it back. All right, Madam Clerk.
This is the time for the administration of the oath of office to the newly-elected and re-elected council members. I will be calling each council member individually and their families, along with the person who will be administering the oath. First, can I have Councilmember-elect Noah Blom and his family come forward along with Superior Court Judge Steve Bromberg to administer the oath to Councilmember Blom?
How you doing, Noah? Good. You know, I came in tonight, you're going to be giving the oath. I'm going to be giving you the oath to be the newest councilperson for District 5. So when I came in tonight and I saw you, I saw your dad, John. As you found out, and I think you knew this for some time, it was such a pleasure for me to see him because he and I worked together. He gave so much effort to this city when he had his business in Corona Del Mar. He made a difference in this city. Probably one of the biggest ones was, a lot of people aren't aware of this, is that Caltrans dedicated PCH to Newport Beach. He was a major player of that. I have a huge picture with everyone who was involved in that. So where I'm going with this is you have some very, very fine shoes to step into, and I'm confident you're going to do a very good job. So are we ready to take care of some business?
Let's do it.
Okay, very good. If you'd like to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, come around this way. There we go. And if you'd repeat after me. I, Noah Blom.
I, Noah Blom.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental purpose of evasion and purpose. Something like that, right? We're almost there.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Outstanding. And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to...
Congratulations, council member.
Thank you so very much.
Pleasure.
A pleasure.
Welcome to the dais, Councilmember Blom. Madam Clerk.
Next, can I have Mayor Pro Tem Brad Avery and his family come forward, along with former City of Newport Beach Mayor Evelyn Hart, to administer the oath to Mayor Pro Tem Avery.
Stand over here, Brad. Oh, Julie came up, great. The, we both have to use this, you know.
Okay.
All right, fine. I like the Bible. I should have brought one. I didn't think about that, Brad. You know, I admire you so much. Of all the years that I've known you, it has been a long time. And all the seas that you have sailed, not as a passenger, but as a captain. All the work that you've done over the years. Thousands of young sailors now know how to sail, they respect the ocean, and have a good future because, a lot because of you and the joy you have brought them to all the sea. I know how, there's many other things, you're, you know, as far as friends of Oasis, you're advisor there, and for advocacy board, and we appreciate everything that you do for the seniors. You and Julia, of course, are supporters of the arts and, and many other things. There's the Bible, great, thank you. You have a good family. And the things that you have done and your wonderful, you know, experience now that you can, even building a bridge, of all things, and you use all those experiences here for another four years on the city council. And it's just a pleasure that I'm able to stand here and do the oath of office with you. So, shall we? Would you would say, this is the oath of office for allegiance for the public officers and the employees. So I state your name.
I, William Bradley Avery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without reserve or mental reservation.
Without reserve or mental reservation.
For the purpose, for the purpose. Without any mental reservation for the purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
I am to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brad, again, yep.
Last but not least, can I have Mayor O'Neill and his family come forward, along with his father, United States District Judge Lawrence J. O'Neill, to administer the oath to Mayor O'Neill?
Just one comment. That your mother and I are immensely proud of you, not just because of what you've done this last year as mayor, not just what you've done the last four years as a member of the council, but as a person of integrity and civility. To see what you've done with sincerity and sensitivity is beyond description. And the pride, the pride that your mother and I feel for you and about you would be a gross understatement, no matter what words I used. So, congratulations. Are you ready to take the oath? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William O'Neill.
I, William O'Neill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support. And I will defend.
And I will defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United.
And of the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
So help me God.
All right. The city council will now consider the annual mayoral appointment, so I will turn the floor over to the city clerk to conduct the mayoral election.
This is the time for election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. Note that there are seven mayor. They're over there. Seven mayor pro tem nameplates have been created for the reorganization process. The same procedure will also be followed for the selection of the mayor pro tem. Nominations do not require a second. They do not, they are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second. It is not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot, and the results will be read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done by oral vote. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Yes, Clerk, Madam Clerk, I nominate Brad Avery.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Will O'Neill.
Move to close nominations.
I second.
Oh, it does not require, it does require a second. Yes, I second.
Yes. By a show of hands, all in favor for closing nominations? That's unanimous. So no opposed? Do any of the councilmembers wish to have any discussions on the nominees?
I would like to talk on the nominee, if that's possible.
Okay, Councilmember Blom.
I know I'm extremely new here, second maybe even. But I was elected, and as Jim Mosher pointed out, by the city. So my responsibility here is to the city, and the city alone. We have friends on the dais, of course. We've conversed with all of them, and that's wonderful, but I'm not here for them. I'm here to represent Newport Beach. And Newport Beach emphatically has asked me from all angles and all levels for this. From the concerned moms of Newport that are fighting for their kids, to the people that tell me every day how much they love the announcements that Will puts out. How much they care about feeling like they're part of the city for the first time in a long time. And this is a moment in our history that is unprecedented, and every single person on this dais said the same thing. Will did an amazing job through this. And to quote Bob Dylan, "We don't change horses in midstream." Right now, as a business owner, if I was the CEO in charge of the company that is Newport Beach, I wouldn't remove myself because we're doing well. And Will's acted as that person. He's put forth the ideals of Newport. And so, this isn't a time for fair. This isn't a time for what's right. This is a time for what the city needs. Fair for elected officials is not a thing. We're here to represent. We're here to tell the city or work with the city and put their view forward, not our own. We all have aspirations. Mine's to get back to our restaurants after all this is done. It's not to be in political office. But right now, we have a decision to make, and that decision's important. And I know this isn't a popular thing I'm doing, and that's okay. Because I'm not here for popularity. I'm here to make the right choices for our city. And this is the right choice. It's what I believe, and I think it'll keep us stronger for the next year. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Being none.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to weigh in. And I'd like to first say thank you to the folks who have, you know, reached out. I know that it's confusing that we have elections and then we rotate amongst ourselves. It's, it's a tradition that is held actually in most, most cities around Orange County. The majority of the cities actually elect their, their city council members, and then the council members themselves select the mayor. So I, I would like to say thank you to those, the folks who have, you know, reached out and, and offered support for the year that we've had, and, and have said very, very kind things about me. But I think it's probably worth just saying a few things. The first one is that, you know, first and foremost, Newport Beach has found itself in a better position than most, if frankly, maybe not, maybe if not all the cities that, you know, are, are in this county right now. And in large part, it's because of the, the personal responsibility and the, the way that our residents and businesses have reacted throughout the year. And up, you know, up on the dais, we, you know, we're conduits for, for the people that we represent. You know, the best thing that, one of the best things we've been able to do throughout this year is, is provide consistent and consistent communication and transparency, early and often. And, and look, I, I've been really proud this year to lead through the efforts that have resulted in really good dialogue and discussions with our schools, with our supervisor, as you heard earlier, with the county health director, with our state representatives, our federal representatives, and all of the other Orange County mayors. We actually have a call every Thursday night with all 34 mayors. It's an interesting call to be on. And then, I mentioned earlier, you know, maybe most importantly, Hope Hospital and the other hospitals in the region. And, look, I, I think in this coming year, we're going to owe it to our residents to continue that strong, consistent, and transparent communication, because this is going to be a tough year. It's going to start off tough. It's going to continue to be tough. And, you know, one of the nice things about this past year, because you always have to look for silver linings, has been serving with Brad and, you know, being, serving alongside him and getting to know him, not just as a colleague, but developing a closer friendship with Brad. And, you know, Brad's seen what this position has become. This has, to Mr. Mosher's point, when he called the position of mayor and mayor pro tem largely ceremonial. Yeah, normal years they are. This year, next year, not so much. There will be very few ceremonies in the coming year. There were very few ceremonies this year. The idea that this would be a ceremonial role is a bit beyond where we are at the moment. And, you know, and so because Brad knows what this job is, knows what the ongoing responsibilities of communication are, I am confident that Brad is going to rise to the occasion. I, I really, I, I'm absolutely confident of it. And, you know, if, if he weren't confident in it, of course I would offer to serve going, going forward. Of course, I would, I would, I would be there if, if my fellow councilmembers asked me to. But I, I've spoken to Brad to make sure that he, you know, he is ready to rise to this occasion. He absolutely is. And so I just want everyone to understand, and I, I'll give him the opportunity to, to confirm this right there, but that confirmation's enough for me, and I, I plan on supporting Brad for, for mayor.
Are there any more councilmember comments? Councilmember Muldoon?
So, having sat in the mayor position before, it, it's an amazing position, and Will makes an excellent point with the highly engaged electorate and excellent staff. It almost has an autopilot to it. There's no doubt that, in this case, Will had to take, take the wheel more often than most councilmembers and, and prior mayor positions. But I think ultimately the message is that, like many other cities, we've had a chance to, to really right this ship, to ride, to, we've learned from this. Our, our staff is very intelligent, and the resources and the, the knowledge gained is not going to go away because we're all relying on Will to continue to do all that heavy lifting, because he wakes up at 4:00 AM, if you didn't know that. And it's unbelievable. I, I do think that, having sat in that position before, demeanor is actually one of the most important things we have. We all have one vote up here. It's an interesting process. You know, some major cities, the mayor has numerous votes, or he has veto power over his colleagues. But in our situation, we rely heavily on staff, and we still look at each other as colleagues. And I believe that Brad has the correct demeanor and is willing to listen to sound judgment and, and from advice from, from Mayor O'Neill. So I, I believe the correct message is that we are resilient and we are overcoming these obstacles. And if anything, this council is even more freedom-oriented with the addition of Councilmember Blom, and that's something that I'm very proud and excited about. But I believe Brad to be a very humble and earnest and honest man who is worthy for the position. Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Very briefly, I nominated Mr. Avery specifically because I know, as we, when we elected him a year ago to be mayor pro tem, I knew he could rise and be elevated to this role, and deservedly so. This is a tradition, not only with the city of Newport Beach, that the mayor and mayor pro tem positions rotate amongst the seven council members, but most of the other cities in Orange County, as the mayor indicated, are doing the same thing, even during this time of the pandemic. So numerous, number of cities are, are changing their leadership, and I believe the confidence of their community and their other councilmembers that they all work together to support one another, to lead the city. One of the things, their respective cities, one of, one of the remarkable aspects of the city of Newport Beach and under the mayor's leadership, as well as city staff, our fiscal situation is strong, our community is strong, and we will emerge through this coming year stronger and, and better. And I know, under Mr. Avery's leadership, we won't miss a beat. He, I don't have to justify it. He's just been reelected for a second term by a great margin. The community endorses his position as mayor pro tem and will be supportive of him being mayor, and it's not a reflection of Mayor O'Neill not doing it. Of course, he's done a fine job. And it will be a different form of leadership under Mr. Avery, and he will be equally outstanding in his role. Every person who serves in this position as mayor serves very capably. And as it is a great honor to serve the people of Newport Beach, but we have to remember, the mayor is first among equals. We are all equal here. We all give our blood, sweat, and tears to this wonderful city, and we often follow in footsteps very large, and we continue to do what's best for the city of Newport Beach. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brenner?
I woke up this morning expecting to support Mayor O'Neill for another term, and I've, I've been convinced by the comments of the mayor and the. been convinced by the comments of the mayor and the comments of Brad that we can make this transition easily and confidently, and that I do believe it's time for a mayor that comes from Brad's district, because there has not been one for quite some time. And I believe that he can step up to the plate and lead our city in his very competent, quiet, and steady leadership style. It will be different from Will's style, but I think we can handle it. As everyone has said, our city is strong, our city is in great shape, and I think we'll do well with, we would do well with either one of them leading us, but I will support Brad because of Will's remarks.
Any other council member? Being none, you have paper ballots in front of you. If you could please fill out one line for Councilmember Avery and one line for Councilmember O'Neill and vote, and I will pick up the votes. Councilmember Brenner voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember Duffield voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember Avery voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember O'Neill voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember Muldoon voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember Dixon voted for Councilmember Avery. Councilmember Blom voted for Councilmember O'Neill. With the vote 6-1, Councilmember Avery, you are the new mayor for 2020 to 2021. Mayor Avery is taking his seat at the mayor location on the dais, and will take over the meeting from here.
This is the time for the city council to conduct the election of the mayor pro tem. The nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Yes, Mayor, I nominate Kevin Muldoon.
Do I hear any other nominations?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to nominate myself.
All right. Are there any further nominations?
I move to close. We need a second.
Second to close. Do any of the council members wish to have discussions regarding the nominees? Yes, Joy.
Prior to that, are there any objections to closing the nominations? Thank you. That was none.
In my campaign two years ago, I promised to open the doors and windows to shine light on City Hall and what happens here. And although unanimity is important in our election process, for me, it's also important to speak truth as we see it. I sent a letter today to a group of women elected officials from throughout Orange County with whom I regularly meet. As a side note, let me add, four of them are currently serving as mayors in contiguous or nearby cities to Newport Beach. In it, I said, "I'd like to ask for your support tonight as I nominate myself for mayor pro tem," with, from what I understand, no supporting votes on the council, but a great deal of support from the community. I feel very strongly that I deserve the seat and will do the best job for our city in supporting our new mayor. As opposed to Kevin, who, although he is a very nice young man, will be running for Board of Supervisors and wants this title on his ballot statement. He has already served in both these positions of leadership, has a full-time job working for an employer whom I'm sure expects something in return for his paycheck, and a young family who also deserves some of his time. I feel that the right thing for our city is to have a committed team serving us as we recover from the pandemic, and intend to make my case for that. And after all, if women don't advocate for themselves, who will? And the reason I wrote to these women is because we have a history in Newport Beach of some fine women mayors, but we also have a history of passing over some well-qualified women on this council who should have served and were denied the opportunity. I wanted these elected women to know that I am doing everything I can to rectify that. Almost everything I do is intended to show my children and my grandchildren that I put my money where my mouth is and work my hardest to do what is right. It's an important lesson for our girls, but really for all of us, to know that you try your hardest, you learn everything you can in order to be prepared, you invest the time and the energy and the passion in what you do, and then you stand up for yourself. You toot your own horn if you have to. The days of sitting back demurely and letting other people sing your praises are over. Although humility is still something I value, the other guys are not sitting back waiting for someone else to say how great they are. They tell us every time we turn around. No one from my district has had the opportunity to sit in either of these seats for quite some time. Our rotational system is intended to ensure that all districts within the city have the chance for someone from their area to serve in leadership positions. Our system has a purpose, it means something, and it's important. It's not about personalities, it's about full representation for all the citizens of our city. Together, Brad and I are both full-time council members. Now that he is retired, I know that we could work together to fully support each other and to spend all the time necessary focused on our city's recovery from this pandemic, the economic revitalization necessary to get our businesses back on their feet, the support we need to give from our city, and to work with Sacramento and Santa Ana, much as we may disagree with some of them, to bring our tax dollars back to support our community. It's not about us wanting to shake our fists at them when it comes to asking for their help with our money for our constituents. This pandemic recovery deserves a full-time, committed team. Finally, I know that some of my colleagues have made personal promises to support Kevin, and they are people of integrity who value their word. However, I submit to you, and this is a plea, that you made a higher promise to serve the citizens of Newport Beach, and that promise overrides any other. It's not what's right for ourselves right now, it's what's right for our city that counts at this very challenging time. That being said, I humbly nominate myself for mayor pro tem and ask for your support.
Mayor Muldoon?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. I'm incredibly honored to have been supported by the city for my reelection efforts, and it's been the honor of my life to serve on the city council. And I can't tell you what the friendships mean, and it's my pleasure to have supported Diane Dixon when she was mayor twice, and I really appreciate her supporting me for this position. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
May I speak?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. The mayor's in charge. Excuse me. I appreciate very much Councilmember Brenner's heartfelt comments. That took courage, and she is a woman of courage and great strength, and certainly represents her district and the city quite well, extremely well, and she's a dedicated council member. I support Councilmember Muldoon. He was recently, when was it, 2018, reelected by a very wide margin by the residents of this city. It is in the city's history and precedent that council members in their second term serve, may serve, if supported by their council, respective colleagues may serve again in that capacity. He is able, represented his district and his constituents, and has served the city. I am proud to support him, and I say that knowing full well that Ms. Brenner has just, she has the rest of her term, as well as if she runs for reelection, she has four more terms, so there's six good years, that she has all the eminent qualifications to serve the city and as either mayor pro tem and a future mayor. I don't think this is the last vote for Councilmember Brenner, and if I'm still on the council, I will take great pride in supporting her at that time. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'll say a few things. There's no question in my mind, Joy Brenner will make a fine mayor, and so much of this is timing. And I made a commitment to Mr. Muldoon some time ago, way before any of this got rolling. And I need to keep that. He's a very articulate, intelligent person and knows how to do the work. I've seen it. And I appreciate his commitment and his certainty on his opinions, which a lot of the time I value, sometimes I disagree with, but we're good with disagreeing with each other. And I think that's what's really important in any body like this, that we have our disagreements and we just move on. So I regard him as a friend and someone who's got a lot of honor. And Joy is great, and that's understating it. She's very much loved by the community and has a great depth of knowledge about the community. Just to have to choose is really difficult for me. And, but I've, like I said, I'm going to honor my commitment to Mr. Muldoon and very happily vote for Ms. Brenner on the next go-around here. Thank you.
With that, you have paper ballots, since there are two nominees. If you can fill those out, please. Councilmember Blom votes for Councilmember Muldoon. Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Muldoon. Councilmember Muldoon votes for Councilmember Muldoon.
Says yours truly.
It does say yours truly. Councilmember Avery votes for Councilmember Muldoon. Councilmember O'Neill votes for Councilmember Muldoon. Councilmember Duffield votes for Councilmember Muldoon. And Councilmember Brenner votes for Councilmember Brenner. Six to one, the mayor pro tem is Councilmember Muldoon. Congratulations. May I take your seat? Thank you.
Is this where I get my remarks? What are we doing here? Oh, musical chairs. Sorry. I thought it wasn't so. So, the seniority order? Got Muldoon, Dixon, Duffield, O'Neill, Avery, Brenner, and Blom. Duffy, are you?
And this is pursuant to Council Policy A1. Is by seniority and then highest margin of victory percentage.
So Duffy, I think you and I are the only ones that are going to choose. Do you want to switch with me, or do you want to stay where you are? No, no, Duffy. Duffy, do you want to switch, or are you good? All right, there we go.
Actually, I think I get to choose with Noah, if I'd like to switch with Noah.
True.
Correct. And I think you told me that was your favorite seat on that end of the dais. I remember that, so I think I'm going to switch with Noah.
Okay.
How's it seem, Noah? Okay on that end?
Oh, this is beautiful on this side. Love this side.
Great. Now, we will hear from the elected council members. Blom, Avery, and O'Neill. And I'm assuming in that order? As we wish? All right. Mr. Blom?
Well, wonderful. I'd like to thank, first and foremost, my wife, who is pretty much everything. She's the brains behind every operation and the inspiration every day. So, without her, nothing would be possible. She gives me the drive to be who I am. So, the biggest round of applause for my wife. She's just one of the greatest things on this planet. Well, thank you. I'd like to say I'm extremely honored, and that's pretty much how I look at this role, is I am honored to represent the city of Newport Beach. Growing up here, being raised here, spending all my time here, you have a different view of what this city is. Leaving and experiencing the rest of the world and getting the opportunity to make it back has been one of the greatest things in my life. Building businesses here and family, seeing us grow, rise, and adjust, there's nothing like it in this world. And being able to compare it to other cities, because we do have businesses in other places, is phenomenal, because you really gain to appreciate the strength that's up on this dais, the strength of our police and fire. Unbelievable. They keep our city safe and amazing, and you see it from the citizens that have the faith in what we do. And I can always promise that that will be my role here, is that no matter what happens on any other side, I'll always speak from my heart and do what I believe is right. And there is no swaying me. I think most of us know that, especially my wife. But I will do everything in my power to make this the greatest city I can. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Well, I've heard from a handful of people that one thing they appreciated in 2020 was an efficient meeting. So, given that I've already recapped 2020, I'm going to try to keep this one focused. So first, thank you to the voters of Newport Beach for the privilege to serve on city council. Thank you to my friends and family for their constant and continued support, especially to those who are in person or watching online. Thank you most of all to my wife Jenny and our children, Aubrey and Sean. You have taught me empathy and patience, especially as I've been home way more this year than I think ever before. But specifically to Jenny, you've been an unbelievable wife, best friend, mom, and teacher. I couldn't have made it through this year without you, and I'm thankful every day that we get to go into this next year together, too. I'd like to spend just a minute discussing what I think the coming year is going to require, which is a simple word with profound implications, which is the word resilience. Humans have known for millennia the value of building their homes on firm foundations. the value of building their homes on firm foundation. Everything from the three little pigs to major religions have used the concept as a metaphor. The concept is so well ingrained for so long that our society has adopted the phrase biblical to describe natural disasters that confront and often destroy man-made structures, built on lesser foundations that use straw instead of brick. A passage that I've come back to from time to time in 2020 is Matthew 7:24 to 27, which references the wise man who built his house on the rock. "The rain came down, the floods came, and the winds blew and beat against that house; yet it did not fall, because it had its foundation on the rock." In 2020, the rains came, but it was the high tide and extraordinary surf that caused our flooding, and the winds blew and set our state ablaze. But throughout this year, we have seen the good that can be accomplished when our city is built on a firm foundation of kindness, neighborliness, charity, and resilience. Indeed, that kind of resilience shows up most in the relationships that we have. If there was ever a time to test whether human beings are social creatures, this year proved the need to be together for our own mental well-being. It has shown our reverence, not just for life itself, but a well-lived life full of respect and compassion. As we move forward into 2021 and have the chance to come together again, I'd like us to remember the meaning of community and again recognize the staggering acts of kindness and generosity that have helped us move through this time of crisis. Before we get there, we still have a long ways to go. We still have rains coming, floods nearing, and winds blowing, but we know without a doubt that not only is Newport Beach a city built on rock, but it can truly be a shining city on a hill when the clouds part. I ask that each and every person in this city resolve now to move forward into 2021 with a spirit of resilience. So let's get going, because we have work to do.
Thank you. I think anyone that takes this seat, especially for the first time, you know, you've got to be humble, and I think it's really important that you don't have all the answers, and you've got to be able to reach out to people. And I certainly intend to do that because I have those feelings of having to meet the expectations and really the needs of this community. But I take solace in always understanding that seven of us up here have to work together. One of us really can't change much, except maybe Mr. O'Neil. He made some big changes, and not by any decree, but just by his personality and his ability to reach out to people. But moving forward, I'm confident we've got a great council. I've seen it. I welcome Mr. Blom to the council, and he's demonstrated his clear vision of his commitments, of what he's about, and I think that's important. It's important to have that, and I know he'll represent his constituency going forward, and I think his constituency, based on his experience over time, will broaden greatly. But I would like to just go back into history a little bit here, when I was Will's Pro Tem about 10 years ago, it feels like. And this COVID emergency came along, and it was something to see him go into action. Because it's one thing to inherit it, as I'm doing, it's another to just get hit with it right at the very start, really at the start of your term, a month in, a month and a half in. And he became an expert on COVID, and he knew the threats and the impacts that were going to be coming to our city. And he worked closely with the Hope Hospital, and he partnered with all the different health agencies. And his communications were, I think, I've never seen anything like it among any council members. I mean, everyone's got a Facebook page, but Will had a lot more than that going. And people responded to it. And his number of followers are in the thousands, and he had the extraordinary support of the police and fire and lifeguards because he took the time to really understand those operations and work with their leadership, and also work with their rank and file. And that became very evident in negotiations, how well he knew those agencies. And that also helped, so we could negotiate from a standpoint of being well-educated. And Will has led our finance committee and solved for a COVID budget shortfall of $30 million, and we're ending this year with around a $12 million surplus. So it's been extraordinary. There's no city, in my view, that's run as smoothly as this. And part of it's because of our culture. We don't have so far, we present to the community a solid front, and we know what the disagreements are between us, but it's really important for all of us to come together, and especially in a time like this, and present a unified front of understanding and, above all, working, just the day-to-day slog work of doing the residents' business, doing the business community's business. That's what's required. There's nothing fancy about it. It's actually very simple. But you've got to understand that, that it's not about the honorary of being mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Each one of us contribute, each one of us are equals up here, and we depend on each other, and we make the votes when we can get them from each other. And that's why it's so important that we forgive the transgressions that sometimes we feel that one has made against the other, because it's not about us, it's about the community. And the way we serve the community is by working together. So I'm honored to be the mayor among seven equals, and your council has delivered for the people of this city during a time of crisis, fear, and uncertainty, and hardship. We had disagreements, we made tough decisions, and remain focused on the safety and the needs of our community. And as I said earlier, I believe no city has ran smoother in public or actually in closed session and in dealing with the public and residents. No cities run smoother in a time like this, in this unprecedented time. Looking forward to the challenging months ahead, and by all indications, as Will has alluded to and not so alluded to, said plainly, we're headed for some real tough months, and I have no illusions about that, and I don't think anyone in this room has. I will be committed to working with residents, businesses, council, and city managers, police, fire, and lifeguards, and I know all of us together will maintain and enhance the safety and quality of life in Newport Beach. And by all of us together, of course, I mean the residents of this town. I'm talking about the visitors. We need everybody, and our staff, our executive team, our managers. We've all got to be going in the same direction, and that's really excellence of service at all times, and trying to stay ahead of this wave that we're riding. So not to go on too much further, but I'll just make a, Will got some analogies in there, and I will make an analogy about sailing here. I grew up sailing on Newport Harbor. I was three months old, and my parents took me sailing for the first time. I don't remember any of that, but that's what my mother told me. And then I was hired by Dave Grant, who's in the audience here, who was president of Orange Coast College and now is on the Board of Trustees, past president of the board, and he hired me out of college. I had a journalism degree from USC and was making about .37 cents an hour at the register, and I needed a part-time job, and he hired me. And for 42 years, I was at the Orange Coast College Sailing Program, and one of the things that I got to do was take about two months every year to fly to our sail training ship that was at any part of the world and lead the crew on the vessel to remote places in the world. So we visited Pitcairn Island, we did the Sydney Hobart Race, we went to Antarctica, we went to South Georgia, just extraordinary trips. And during these times, I learned a great deal, and I learned the most from, like all lessons, from the really hard times. And those were in storms in the Southern Ocean primarily, and some in the North Pacific, actually. And so in a strong storm, I learned, number one, resiliency, because storms just don't give up, and you've just got to keep coming back at them. I learned that in these situations, you protect your crew, you shorten sail, which is basically what we did with the budget. The budget was, Will had shortened the sail on the budget, and we work hard to manage the ship. You remain optimistic because the crew is watching you all the time, if you're in the leadership position. And that's, Will was doing that left and right, and I intend to do the same thing. You focus on staying the course, and you try to avoid making mistakes, because it's real easy in a situation where we're all under pressure to make mistakes that cost our residents money, that could potentially cost public safety. So now we are in the 10th month of our storm, and we can see calm waters in the distance, but it feels like sometimes we will never reach safety. And now is the time to double down on taking care of our city and each other. This is the time to not let up in our resolve to be resilient and to reach the shore. Thank you.
Okay, there are a couple of items that we need to take care of prior to adjourning tonight. Do we have those items?
Mr. Mayor, I had a quick question on item 16 from staff before we go into consent, if that would be okay?
Yep.
Real quick, do we need to have the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem be the designee, or can we designate anyone?
You can be anyone.
I would ask, unless the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem would very much like it, Councilmember Dixon and I had been designated for this task. I was hoping that we could just ratify that right here.
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the modification of item number 16 being Councilmember Dixon and Councilmember O'Neil.
I second.
Ready to vote? Out the public? Mr. Moser there? No one there?
Any phone?
No one there. Okay, I'll bring it back. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions? All right. Hearing none, we are adjourned.